Randy Brockway?
Here.
Sherry Kleiber?
Here.
Rachel Morello?
Here.
Linda Murphy?
Here.
Rich Regan?
Here.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Here.
And Jeff Miller?
Here. The next item is a public comment. We have Kristin Didio. If you could sub it to the microphone, please, that would be great.
Hi, Kristin Didio. I live at 3531 Hollywood in Brookfield. I just really wanted to say on behalf of the Hollywood Parking and Traffic Committee, thank you threefold. Number one, for responding so quickly to our voice or to our email a few weeks back about what was taking place and what was coming down the pipe. Number two, for really your support in passing the resolution. I think it was very, very helpful. And number three, to Jeff and to Patrick Pat, who stayed last night and attended the Village of Brookfield meeting. They put us last on the agenda and they stayed through the meeting. It wasn't, you know, 11 o'clock late, but it was definitely something that we had to wait for. And we really just appreciated you guys being there and truly being supportive. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on the topic. And hopefully the Brookfield trustees will act on it, act on your recommendations.
I hope so, too. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no, I see there are no other public comments, so the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Dr. Burnett and Dr. Kelly are supposed to join us.
They're just out in the hallway. I don't know if...
Yes, song.
Should we ask them to come in?
Yeah, I think maybe they are waiting for us to... They might not think we are starting yet. Dr. Burnett and Dr. Kelly is doing the superintendent's search for the school district. And they're here to present, not the final draft, but one of the drafts of a candidate profile. And they want to make sure the board is updated on the schedule as well as the particular draft of the profile itself. So while they're coming in, though, let me just, a couple other comments. I think you received the feedback on the two institute days. I think if Merle Brownlow wrote it herself, she couldn't have done any better. That was phenomenal feedback, a very positive two institute days. Secondly, I walked around every building and talked to teachers at random about the opening of school. I asked each one, give me a 1 to 10, how smooth was the opening? Nobody gave me a lower than a 9. So I think, I hope the students felt, you know, in a similar fashion as our, you know, as our staff. So I think it was good signs of a very positive opening. So with that, we have Dr. Kelly and Dr. Burnett joining us to update us on superintendent search.
We're there already?
We're there, yes.
Okay.
Expect some to kind of shuffle in song and dance.
We had presented to you a week or so ago, a first draft of a superintendent profile. And basically looking at three things. Qualifications initially, particular skills that we would like to have the candidate possess, and then also personal traits. And so based on the feedback we received from you in these individual meetings, and Mary Rose by email and phone, we modified that first draft. And so now it's in second draft form. And so we just wanted to give you an opportunity to look at it before we took it on the road, so to speak. And we are scheduled next week to meet with staff in each of their buildings. And so we're going to go to each school and meet with staff and also with district staff separately. And then in tomorrow's papers and on the website will be the news release that indicates our public meeting, which will be on Wednesday, the 23rd. And as an additional means of getting feedback from the community, and I suppose staff as well, there will be an online survey form. That online form will be on the district website from the 21st through the 22nd. And then we will be back to the board on October 6th.
How many days?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay.
Through the 20... What did I say? Twenty-second.
I was just going to make sure.
It's a quick survey.
Twenty-eighth.
They better be quick.
Well, that's why Dennis and I team each other.
They don't want any responses, do they?
And then the advantage of this profile is as we advertise the position, which we would plan to do after October 6th, it will guide us as we screen candidates. And we will certainly work to match the candidates with the profile. And so I had sent you a note the end of last week. I didn't get any responses. We don't really need you to act on this tonight because it's simply in a draft form. But just have your understanding that this is the form that we will take next week to the staff. We'll put it on the website. And then we'll come back and report to you and give you feedback on October 6th. So are there any questions or comments at this point? This is the shortest presentation I've ever given.
Well, thanks very much.
If you have questions in the future, give either one of us a call. While there are things that we should be doing and things we shouldn't do, there are very few right and wrong answers in the process. And you will see things probably that we won't see. So your input is very, very helpful.
You know, I do have some questions. Where are you going to advertise? I don't know if advertise is the right word, but what sources will be using to aid your recruiting efforts?
Yeah, we are going to be working on that in the next two weeks. We want to cast as wide a net as possible, but especially in the state of Illinois. And when we come back, I know you have a really full agenda tonight, but on October 6th, we will go into detail then about where we're going to advertise, the timeline, and all of the aspects of the search, and be able to spend a little bit more time in detail so that you're informed and also that we're all on the same page. Okay.
Any other questions, sir? Well, thanks very much for getting the ball rolling on this. Some of my guests made a lot of progress already, so it's great.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you did move this up a little bit. And you approved our work on September 1. On September 2, we were in the office and had a meeting, and we were on the road.
Great.
And so we're looking forward to a really successful and productive search.
That's right.
Right, thank you.
My guess is the shortest time you'll ever be at a board meeting in all your career, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Nothing could be better. Wait a minute, you're not staying around for the evening? Oh, just kidding.
We'll be back.
You're going to catch it on TV, I know.
Correct.
It's nice to see you again.
Another board initiative, strategic planning. We have now over 300 surveys returned. More than the dozen or more districts that Bob Madonia has served, we have the highest number of surveys returning. So he's in the process now of collecting the data and interpreting it. We also have over 40, with a month to go, over 40 members of our community that wants to serve on focus groups. So I think we've had a very successful, positive response. Parent-teacher handbook, I put a working draft in an information item. I want to apologize, normally this should be to you in August for your approval. Right now, because it's not totally clean, it has not been really revised for two years properly. So we want it in great condition before we bring it for your action. And you'll see it in October. So I didn't want you to think we were just putting it on a back burner. That's why I included a working draft and described it that way to you. So hopefully we'll have a nice, clean version for you. And lastly, spoiler alert. You want to put that slide up, Merle? The state superintendent is releasing the park results, partial park results tomorrow. And I think you'll find some of his quotes very interesting. While the numbers are not final, we know that the percent of students who demonstrate proficiency are likely lower than the percentage of students who were proficient on the previous test. So he's obviously preparing us for the, you know, for some lower results. Interesting quote, "I do not want anyone to use these results to shame teachers or schools." So he's actually shaking his finger at us and saying, you know, be careful how you utilize these results. These are baseline data that we're going to be utilizing. And the way it's interpreted by the state superintendent, it's a way that this state is setting high expectations. And I thought you'd find that very interesting because the initial results will be released tomorrow for the first time. So again, spoiler alert, you're going to get the results.
When will we see those results? At the next meeting or...
My guess is you're going to see them in the newspapers, probably tomorrow.
Are they actually...
Yeah. I guess as soon as I get them, I will, you know, share them with the board as soon as I have an official copy.
They are going to be released to the newspapers tomorrow.
Initial results, that's the way they decide, but not complete.
No.
And I'm not sure, Merle, are you clear on what they mean by initial results and partial results?
Just that they're not going to be...
Complete.
100% verified.
Right. So I think that's fascinating. And there's some interesting quotes from the state superintendent.
They have them done until mid-October. They want to leave themselves some little room to make sure that there's no probably question around what they release.
So do you have any more? Okay, well, thanks, Dr. Powell.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to be taken off?
The truck.
The truck is, has to be taken off, yes.
Correct.
Item number nine, although this is just a legal notice, so it really doesn't have to be taken off per se. It's just a legal notice that we're advertising for that.
Right.
So it could be left on, I assume.
Yes.
Can you explain the truck, why it's...
We only got three bids for the truck. And so we're not, we're not going to take one of those bids. We want to get more bids because they came from the same dealer, the same network of dealers, I guess. Is that correct, Mr. Sellers?
So...
We're two locations from the same dealer company. So that's not really valid.
Basically, one bid.
But we can leave this legal notice on the consent agenda because it's just a legal notice that we're advertising for bids, correct?
And we're glad to say that we'll have a truck in place before the snow starts falling, even with this delay.
I would like the stipend list taken off, or not taken off, but to be discussed.
Which item is that? The number eight?
Number eight. And I guess also I'd like to ask some questions about online registration and InfoSNAP. And then I guess just clarification with this, on the truck, are we, we're not voting on it tonight?
No.
So, okay, that's, okay.
So number eight, point number eight, what was the other point you wanted to discuss?
Five, I'm sorry, I'm doing them out of order here.
Five, okay.
Five and eight.
Are there any other items people would... Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, accepting items number five, the online registration with InfoSNAP, and accepting item number eight, the District 96 2015-16 stipend list?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Juanita, could you take the roll, please?
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
So let's discuss then the online registration InfoSNAP.
Okay, my only question on that is can you tell me how many vendors you had and what the choice, what the options were? And I don't remember if you went through this at previous meeting.
This is actually, this is an old business item, as you know. I think two or three years ago, this exact same vendor was recommended. For some reason, it was tabled. It's been, was Don here? Oh, there he is. Don went back, reviewed, you know, the research that had been done previously, had several vendors. Actually, Merle Brownlow actually has worked with this particular vendor in a prior district. It's, in terms of Power School, it seamlessly can be integrated. And that's one major reason why we made that choice.
Correct. And we did follow up with a number of the school districts that are currently using it, that are also Power School users. InfoSNAP has 54 districts that are using their product integrated with Power School.
Okay. And then my question on the stipend list, just clarification on, I guess my understanding is that we are approving the four additional positions. That's what we're being asked to do?
Correct.
Okay.
Special Olympics best buddies?
Robotics.
The art, the art, art and robotics.
I think these are wonderful additions. I think because of the double block of math, the art club is not only necessary, but a wonderful addition. I'm all for the Special Olympics and the Best Buddies. I think these are wonderful programs.
And with the squeezing of art out of the daily schedule, I think it's more necessary to have support for our program.
Okay.
Beyond the school day and as more of a co-regular.
Any further discussion?
No.
Is there a motion to approve items five, the online registration with InfoSNAP, and item eight, the District 96 2015-16 stipend list as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
You can have it, Rose. Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
The next item is, are there any comments from the Riverside Education Council?
Yes.
Mr. House?
There's a comment, okay. The members of the REC voted on September 4th to ratify the contract as presented. The process of creating this update to the contract took much time and effort by both teams. While I think that neither side can say they are 100% happy with everything, I think that I can safely say that everyone is satisfied that we found common ground on a lot of issues. One of the most positive things, outcomes of these meetings over the past few months has been a re-establishment of collegial relationship between members of the board and members of the REC, specifically the negotiating teams. I feel it's important to let people know that the negotiating meetings with the two teams were collaborative and productive, even when discussing issues that have previously been somewhat rancorous. We would like to thank Mrs. Morello, Mr. Regan, Mrs. Kleiber, and Mrs. Boyd for listening to our concerns, working with us to find solutions, and helping to create a contract that will help District 96 and the Riverside community remain a great place in which to teach and learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also appreciate the REC's hard work on this and their collegiate and collaborative process. Thank you. Next item, our board member comments. Are there any board member comments about any activities you've done in the last few weeks or...
I just mentioned to Board Member Reagan tonight that I walked my dog past Ames School this evening after, after school. And the after-school program or the after-care program was functioning beautifully. And I got a report from a couple of the young, young adults that are working in that program. And they gave me just a very heartening report about how things are going, the amount of participation, and the changes this year in the program. Changes to improve the program, dealing with homework help and with structured activities and those sorts of things.
Excellent. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. Really good to hear. Are there any other comments?
I'd like to echo Bill's comments. Special thanks from the board to Pat Rome, Bill House, Rachel King, Katie Caosta, and also the members that aren't present tonight, so Helen, Brian, and Jen Ullman. It was a long process, but I think it was very fruitful for the reasons you just said, Bill. I think we were able to establish a relationship that's going to benefit, ultimately benefit the kids in this community. And it's our effort to continue that relationship as we go forward here.
Thank you. Are there any other comments that anyone has? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is, Dr. Powell's recommending that we appoint a Board of Education secretary. This is not, not Juanita Patton's last day in the district, but it's the last time she'll be here taking notes. We appreciate all her hard work. Margie will be taking over that job. But Dr. Powell's recommending we have a board member be the official board secretary and sign the documents.
And I promise you won't have to work as hard as Juanita. You simply have to be the official signature of, as the member of the board, as a board secretary. Most of the boards, actually all the boards I've ever worked with have a board secretary on the board. This is actually the first experience.
Do we have a volunteer to do that?
And you don't have to do it tonight.
No, you have to decide tonight. Are there any volunteers?
We got some time. Juanita can sign until November, so...
You've never seen this set up before because my understanding is we've had this a long time.
Okay, this is the first time that I've experienced in 25 years. I always had a member of the board as board secretary.
And I've obviously looked at other districts' websites, and I've noticed they've had board members. I've noticed.
I mean, one's not better than the other. I just see no reason other than a board member having that official signature. And Juanita's even said to me, well, what's my liability of signing all these things? You know, you know, pay me enough for some of these contracts.
It's just the signature?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea is that the board secretary is supposed to, another set of eyes, they're supposed to read the documents.
That's correct.
Make sure that they're more or less in line and then sign them.
That's correct.
I guess I'd be happy to do that.
I think you can't do it and I can't do it.
You can't do it.
I'm already doing something.
You have to have somebody else.
I would be fine doing it if I could.
That'd be great.
Rachel's steering this way.
That's your nomination, Rachel to Linda, right? You're nominating Linda?
Yeah.
I do think it is worthwhile to have two people reading those documents.
I would be more than happy to do it. Unless there's somebody else out there willing.
Do we want to make the appointment?
You can do it if you want.
Okay, so then we...
We make it effective October 20th, if everyone agrees.
Let me, I just have a real quick question. So what we're going to do then, what we think we, in principle, what we're agreeing to is to appoint a board member as a secretary. And then what happens, and so therefore we're not appointing an employee to...
Right. It's actually just another, like a board president, a board secretary, and a board, a vice president and board secretary, just another position on the board.
And then the person...
Office.
But we will still have Margie actually taking the minutes and doing all the stuff.
She'll do all the legwork, right.
Right.
Okay, I get it.
That's it.
So if everyone agrees, then we'll, and since Linda is a volunteering, generously volunteering, we will appoint Linda as the board secretary effective October 20th, is that right?
Are you going to get a vote on this?
Does there a vote? Does anyone, okay, does there a motion to appoint Linda as the board secretary?
So moved.
So eager.
Second.
She's making sure it doesn't come her way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I think Linda said no.
There you are. All right. Thank you. Next item, our committee reports. Do we have any reports from the education committee?
No, we were finance focused last time, so...
Any reports from the policy committee?
No. No, no report from...
Any reports from the finance committee?
No report.
Okay. Then we move on to business. The first item of business is the approval of the education, Riverside Educational Council agreement. So is there a motion to approve the 2015-2018 collective bargaining agreement with the REC substantially in the form ratified by the teachers and presented by the bargaining team?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Juanita, could you call the roll, please?
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
This is a deep breath.
So the next item, next item is the side agreement to the REC master contract. This is to, we lost a technology teacher at the beginning of the year, so rather than hiring a technology teacher to replace her, I think we...
For the teaching of these classes, right?
We are asking other teachers to basically pick up a load, basically.
Fortunately, volunteers came forward, and we are covering the three sections. And Bill and I had to get together because it was, there was no language in the contract for what they call an extra assignment in middle school. And we wrote off language. It's not going to be past practice. If you want to change it in the future, you can. But we agreed to that, those terms, and that's what you're voting on.
Okay. So with that said, is there a motion that Board of Education, Riverside Educational Council agree to the payment of 10% of a Houser Junior High School teacher's annual salary for the teaching of one section in addition to their full-time schedule of six teaching assignments? This would be in lieu of the teacher's planning period during the 2015-2016 year. Based on the number of days worked, this should be prorated. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Juanita, could you call the roll, please?
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
The next item is for the 2015-2016 legal budget and adoption of resolution. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the ISBE 2015-2016 fiscal year budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Juanita, could you call the roll, please?
Randy Brockway?
Yes.
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Linda Murphy?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
So then we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. These are discussion items. And the first item on this list is the professional development and training for administrators.
I asked the administrators what their professional development plans were. They pointed out to me that in the past year, they were, even though it was in their contract, they were discouraged from taking, getting involved in any professional development. They need it, like the teachers need it. I asked them to put forward what their intentions would be. These are very modest, by the way. You don't see any trips to Las Vegas or Hawaii or anything. I also asked them, and we are just getting some cost, for example, that DuPage cohort, I think for all our principals, we got a moderate, a very decent rate from the DuPage group. However, what my commitment to you would be is if there are any additional significant costs beyond what I'm presenting to you, I'll bring it back to your approval. I guess I'm responding to when I heard early on, you found out about a trip to Ohio for $1,000 or something for plane fare. I mean, that's outrageous, and you should never have to hear about those things. So my commitment to you, this is what they are, you know, this is, they're part of their contract. These are reasonable types of professional development activities. Anything beyond that would be out of the ordinary. My commitment to you, bring back for your approval. If it's a, you know, a national conference or something that we think that we can justify it, we'll bring it back for your review. So other than that, I just wanted to let you know, because I know that was a concern. You don't want to be surprised with unusual costs for professional travel. And I think this, what I'm showing you right now is very reasonable. And anything beyond this, you'll know about. That's all.
Are there any comments, additional comments about this item?
I just want to say, I think it's an appropriate use of funding if we expect teachers to undergo professional development in para and next generation science standards. I expect our administration to have the same background so that we're all on the same page. So I think the ones that were provided here are really not, you know, a million choices, but they're the right ones. So I appreciate them providing it to us ahead of time.
And the other comments? Next item is the student privacy and the use of online instructional resources.
This is, I concluded a memo that we sent to staff from Don and Merle that talked about the importance of student privacy as it relates to instructional technology and online instructional resources. We're going to be, as a first priority, as you see in the memo, is to review existing programs and make sure they align to current state law, state and federal law. In addition, we're going to send a certified letter to pass providers, spelling out to the providers' responsibilities as they relate to state and federal laws on privacy and our district expectations. We're going to develop a document for the, with the assistance of legal counsel, which you've seen a lot of the legwork on that already, for review by our technology committee. And thirdly, we're going to develop an administrative procedure, again with the help of legal counsel, for privacy and the use of online instruction. This has got to be a priority. It's something of a major concern by our parents, and just for protection of our children, this is something we're going to put a lot of energy and time into in the short term, not the long term. However, you can see in the memo, we've asked staff to stop agreeing to anything online for online resources until we vetted that, you know, that provider. And Don's in the process of doing that. So just wanted to give you a quick update. You've been given a lot of background information, and I think we, you know, we're aggressive about this.
Is there any source for best practices in this area? I mean, any source that you know about that, what are considered best practices for a school district to follow, or is this sort of a new?
I think this is more of a new frontier, that, you know, the districts are all scrambling. It's interesting, when we ask for a legal review of this, this is something that our current legal counsel is getting multiple requests all at one time.
Different school districts.
From different school districts, all over the area.
It's very topical, not many.
Exactly. We, I heard that we got to reduce cost on our legal review of this. I don't believe it, but that's what I heard. You know, because of a number of other districts are asking for the same thing. But, you know, I'm a cynic, so.
Well, they did tell us when we hired them that from time to time, they do that. They spread it when it's the same issue.
Yeah, we hope that would be the case. Half joking.
I've got a question.
You mentioned the first priority is to review any existing programs. Can you attach a timeline to that?
All right. Don has been working on this. We asked today how many providers are out there. And Don, you said 20 to 30, correct?
Correct.
And Rich's question, can by the end of September, can we have it all vetted? Your answer is no. Go ahead.
End of September, I think would be rough. We'd probably be looking at, really, hopefully by the end of the year, because we're looking at having to review all the terms of service, all the terms of services, privacy policies, so forth. And then there might be some questions in which maybe fall out of our ability to answer, and we might need to, you know, consult legal counsel. I think in the, I think in terms of the timeframe, within the next, within the next month, to have that audit completed of what, to have that list gathered of what will actually need to be researched on the privacy policy and terms of service. And then probably, you know, I would, I'd considerably say probably at least a month, maybe, maybe longer, to then actually go through all of those, since we don't have an exact number at this point.
Okay. I think that's fair. I would just request that you provide this board an update to your progress at the next board meeting.
I think we probably should do that every month.
Right, okay.
I think it's that important. I agree, Rich.
Thanks.
Don, just, maybe, I'm just going to ask a question. You may not have the answer to it because you haven't reviewed them yet, but you think most of the terms of service will be similar or even identical?
I've begun reviewing some of them. Some of them are very, are very similar, but a lot of those are, with services that I think a lot of districts use and are associated maybe with textbooks, so forth.
Okay.
You know, there's a lot of services that we need to use, for instance, with our online assessments, like NWA map. And there's, so within those, some of those are fairly consistent on that.
There might be categories of...
Exactly, exactly. It's when we get more into those commercial sites that I think it, we have to be really careful in making sure we're looking for some key information.
Thank you. Any other questions about this issue? Thank you. The next item is a report from Mr. Paul Pasetti and his colleagues from Leggett Architects on building improvement plans, including accessibility.
While that's getting set up, I'll let you do a quick setup backdrop for the presentation. At the September 1 Finance Committee meeting, board members were able to discuss each one of these items. There's no additions to the items that were discussed at the September 1 meeting. I just, I don't want to steal Paul's thunder, but the Blythe Park roof sections replacement, we expect that that can be deferred a year. They're going to do another, another check to make sure, but we've already pretty much discussed taking that off of this. Then the security cameras, we would be deferring that to strategic planning discussions. And the foundation water, I'm sorry, the drain tile at the west side of Central, we're looking at foundation-level waterproofing, and that will mitigate this cost very substantially. So that's just a couple of smaller projects. And now that you all are ready, I can turn it over to Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks. With me, Robin Randall, our director of K-12. Bill Bone from Jaikman Hefner, he's here to answer any questions related to the paving. And then Andy Howard from Hitchcock Design Group, landscape architect, who is here to talk playgrounds. So with that, so starting out, just a brief agenda I want to touch on, three major categories here. Update on the 10-year life safety survey, the ADA surveys, and then, as David mentioned, the 2016 projects. So in terms of the 10-year life safety surveys, number of steps we needed to go, we need to go through as part of our proposal, documenting the existing conditions, building in site, reviewing past 10-year surveys, as well as looking for any code deficiencies, and then identifying locations of all your devices. So smoke detectors, emergency exit lights, you can see and hear your fire alarm, your AV signals. We go through to do that, to document for the safety reference plans. We have walked down all the buildings. We're about 25% complete getting the documentation of those. Going through, I guess, on a good note, going through that, no really big, major items that we've seen, some minor stuff that we think we can probably pick up, either staff can take care of directly, but nothing really earth-shattering at this point, so. In terms of the ADA survey, there's, they give, ADA gives a guideline as you're going through, Life Safety Code talks about when you're dealing with buildings in, like, say, for a 30-month period, they look at the level of accessibility related to what you spent on the building, and how it compares to replacement cost of the building. Now, there's really three categories, where you've got less than $100,000 cost, more than $100,000 cost, and then if you're altering more than 50% of value replaced in the building, and in that case, you're required to bring it up to full compliance. I guess in terms of the good news, in your packets I sent out, and I also have through here, I'll hit briefly on some of them. Buildings are, for the most part, accessible. You have accessible toilet rooms. The biggest thing I found, and some of the challenges I found, had to do more with accessible route to the building. I think there's some improvements we can make for not too huge of an expenditure. So just going through that. So again, we look at, from what we look at in the survey, we look at approach and entrance, how do you arrive at the building? And this is how it's prioritized by the ADA. Access to goods and services, that's access to programs and spaces within your building. Access to classrooms, door clearances, and how do you get in and out. What they call priority three is toilet room access, and the dimensions in those toilet rooms. Priority four is other things, like drinking fountains, directional signage, and then play areas. That's actually a specific category. But in terms of that, again, site inspections are complete. We're in the preparation of preparing the report, where I go through room by room and identify any compliance issues related to those spaces. That's more of an overall. As I said, you kind of fell in that other category where there's only certain aspects that you absolutely must meet, but that doesn't mean you don't, necessarily don't want to, or you can certainly choose to make buildings more accessible. And I know it's one of the items that's on the, on the list coming up on the 2016. So in terms of aims, there was, for the approach and entrance, entrance three was really, seemed to me to be the most handicap accessible. It was right next to where the handicap parking spot was, but there was no signage present. So that's something, as I mentioned, very simple. In general, none of the schools really, I felt, had, the playgrounds were accessible, either because of curb or other barrier to get to it, and then the playground equipment itself necessarily doesn't, doesn't have those characteristics, where you'd have transfer spots to get on, and for someone in a wheelchair to be able to utilize. At Blythe, there really isn't any ADA entry identified. The parking is pretty remote in the one end of the parking lot. But, and then getting to the building, any of the entries, any of the entries that I felt would have been accessible really have a more than 1 in 20 slope, so we'd want to look at addressing the sidewalk pitch, or adding a handrail, or something along those lines. Because if it's more than 1 in 20, which is a 5% slope, it's considered a ramp, and therefore should have handrails. And just minor thing there, you know, some of the clocks hang down below 80 inches, which is a height that's kind of given as if, for someone who might be taller and maybe eyesight impaired, they might hit their head if it projects out, so we may want to look at something like that, so. Go ahead, Robin, sorry. Central, I mean, you can, you can get into the lower level via Hauser, and there is access to one classroom, but there are pretty significant level changes in that building that would require a lot of study, probably might fall into that realm of technically infeasible. But, I mean, you could certainly add a few lifts in key locations that might get you to other portions of the building, but to be fully compliant, just because of the level changes, might be pretty difficult to do. Playground as well as multi-level, we'd have to do something pretty extensive there in terms of ramps and combinations to get that, to get that. And then Hauser, building, I mean, the building is accessible at this point, but we know from reports with staff, administration, that it's the time it takes for a student to traverse the building. So one of the things we're looking at and considering, and we'll touch on shortly, is options for installation of an elevator. And then Hollywood, again, just identifying the entry playground. There are, there are ADA toilets. There is a door out front, I believe it's entry two. It's off to the side because, because the main entry has stairs going up to it. We can either look at doing something with the front entry with that, with stairs, if you want to get people to the main entry, or we could do something with door two. I think there, it was mostly the pull force of the door, which was an issue. So we may want to consider putting in a handicap operator. All right. In terms of the 2016 projects, I may have been a little bit different order than you, David. I kind of grouped them by building, so. But as we talked about, the paving project from last year, which we rejected the bids on because we only received the one bid due to the timing. But basically, similar strategy. Robin, maybe go to the next one. We had talked about the main parking area being the base bid, that's area in green. And then we had two alternates, the blue area and the yellow area. And as part of the blue area, alternate two, which we had actually brought to the board as a recommendation, to do areas, one, the base bid plus the blue area. Part of that would be inclusion of a handicap accessible entry piece to get people in from the parking area, a lot closer than having to go in through door five and around. But again, that, the design work's been done for that. You've paid for the services for us to do that. It's just a matter of repackaging it, and then including Hollywood as part of that. That was another item on the list to be taken care of, and so then we just take advantage of that now. The project's a little bit bigger, might get a little more bitter interest. Hope to get that all together, so. In terms of Blythe Park Roofing, David touched on this. We were planning on getting out there in the next couple of weeks here while the weather's still nice. Didn't really afford us that opportunity last year when we were first looking at, considering doing it. Taking a look at it again, making sure there's nothing, or identify any minor repairs that might need to be made, and then move on from there, see, hopefully, hopefully, hopefully our determination will be that we can defer that one more year with either some minor repairs, or if it's really in bad shape, then we would probably, we'd have to come back to you again and indicate so. But it's, I mean, it's on the list for right now. And then Hauser Elevator. So we talked about four potential locations. We looked at an area back where the current tower is. That's area, area one, back up in the upper right corner. Area two was a spot we had first walked through the building and thought maybe we could fit something in near that entry point of the girls' toilet room. Another area we talked about was area six, or area three by the stairs. And then another area, which is actually in the corner of a currently a conference room, and then it does affect two classrooms on the upper levels. But basically, what we looked at when we looked at these opportunities, or these spaces, one and two really create significant access challenges, just because at the chimney location, that's a, currently that chimney's being used for venting in the boiler room, we'd have to completely dismantle that and rework all that piping coming up. And then also, in order to do that, we'd have to add an addition on the third floor to tie back to the building, because the area that that butts up to is actually, the roof stops at the second level. So looking at that, that seemed to me that, between the cost of demolishing the chimney and, and then also the fact that, once you do, so on the first floor, it's fine, but once you get on the second floor, you're actually entering at a half level, and you have to go up or down. So now you've put in an elevator only to have to use a chairlift. So didn't really think that was really a prime spot to go. Area two, when you look at the sheer size of just for an elevator shaft that we need, and then also, as we found, potentially, if we, if we end up going that route, a machine room, you would take out access or have to create access through classrooms on three levels to get into the toilet rooms. And not, and so that would really significantly block the entry, as you can see there. Entry six, we also talked about, that potentially, if we could eliminate stair six, but keep door six access open on the ground level, the only problem we ran into is that really by minimum code, six feet is the minimum corridor width, and by the time you put the elevator shaft in, you're left with about four feet. So that really created a challenge in terms of access.
Can I point out where this, where you're talking about?
Yeah.
Here's three.
Yeah, there's, there's three.
There are numbers, you just can't see the numbers very well.
Yeah, that's three. Two is at the toilet room, and that's, one is up in the corner where the chimney is.
You talked about entrance six.
Yeah, this is entrance, this is entrance six. And so by the time you put the elevator shaft in, you're left with about four feet for a corridor width. We really need to maintain six feet. And then also, the other, the other, the other component of that is, on a daily basis then, students would have to, because the only stair then left would be the stair that's right here. So on a daily basis, kids would have to go through the library to go up and down.
How big is the footprint of the elevator, when you include the, all the machinery that you need around it?
About 80, about 80 square feet.
80 square feet?
Roughly eight by 10.
Okay.
And again, it comes down, you know, could we, by code, could we, because you're not a four-story building, could we put in an elevator that's a little bit smaller? Yes, maybe a foot smaller, but the reality is, if you're going to spend that kind of money, you want to accommodate a gurney if there's an emergency. It's just, it just makes sense. You're going to spend that money. The extra couple of square feet that's going to take is...
Is the, are these blue rectangles drawn to scale then, relative?
Yes, in relation to the plan, correct. They are drawn to scale. Now, the next step on this, and then location four, we talked about the preferred location. As you can see, that's the second floor. It does take out a corner in the classroom. We will have to do some modifications. David and I were talking also with the principal. There are some other ideas, by losing that conference room, that we'd create some other spaces, some trade-offs within the building, potentially relocating that to the current assistant principal's office, and then some other little, you know, some domino effects other little, you know, some domino effects that do happen, but I think are manageable.
Everybody knows that's the professional library right outside the door here is where the.
Right. And that's where your door would be, and then this way the elevator's actually right in the main body of the school, so it's just a very convenient location. There are, I mean, there are challenges, we haven't looked at every aspect yet, that's the next step, I think we were going to talk about.
Just to quickly summarize the domino, in fact, if you're familiar with where assistant principal Jason is located, that would become a conference room. It's got a doorway to the hallway, so that would be a good location, in fact, Principal May is glad to see a conference room close to the main office, so that's an improvement operationally. Where assistant principal Jason would go is just one wall away into the workroom, that displaces a teacher workroom, but not entirely, we'd still leave about a third to 40% of it available for continued use as a teacher workroom. What I'd like to foreshadow, a recommendation for two additional copiers, because by splitting this workroom into multiple spaces, we would need to accommodate the working conditions of teachers that need to get copies done. We'd have a copier in the main office, a copier in the workroom that is now much smaller, and then a copier in the, in the workroom that is really where the elevator is. That plan seems to, you know, offset the downside of losing that conference room, and I think I'm fairly quoting April May in her perception of that.
It was the domino effect, you explained well.
Correct.
Is there any cost to this domino effect? Are we going to have to reconfigure other spaces in losing this space?
It's pretty modest cost, because you're talking about a stud wall to divide the workroom into two rooms, that's not a very expensive remodel. We'd probably have to cap some plumbing, because there's a sink there, but eliminating some plumbing, we're not really going to create plumbing elsewhere, it's just going to be capped. And then the other piece of the domino effect would be the cost of two copiers, copiers running about $12,000. So a couple of copiers, $24,000, and the cost of a little remodeling, so the total is, you know, somewhere $30,000, $35,000.
Now, there's electrical panels that you're taking out on every, all three floors.
Right, and again, we haven't, I mean, we haven't gotten into all the nuts and bolts yet, and I think that's next, we have to look at feasibility structurally to make sure we can cut into that spot, but we believe right now that this is kind of, this is the frontrunner in terms of locations, and I think that's the next step we're going to be asking to be moving forward with.
By the way, we're looking at.
Doing more, I guess, more structural feasibility and.
Taking action in October, but they are looking for consensus to move forward. I mean, you want to put the brakes on now, this is the time to do it, but they need to do a lot of work, so.
I had the opportunity to walk through this with Mr. Pacetti and Mr. Sellers earlier this week, and of the four options here, the last one that we're arriving on is probably the best to do deeper investigation on. As Griff indicated, they do need to do some significant investigation, it's utilities and it's structural, just to see if this could actually work out. And it's providing us more information to see if this is the right answer.
I'd like, I'd like to also clarify that there's two classrooms that are being affected, however, at the end of the classrooms being truncated by this elevator shaft, there will still be close to 800 square feet in remaining.
Remaining, right.
They are two of the largest classrooms in the building, so you're going to take a chunk out, but you're still going to have what is relative to other classrooms, a good-sized classroom.
I don't know if this is irrelevant, but with the sound impact, the teaching in the classroom, is there anything we'd need to do to mitigate any instructional interruptions from the sound of the elevator?
Again, we'll do, we'll do everything we can on that in terms of the thickness of the wall.
While you're in there, I mean.
Right, well, I mean, we'll, we'll look at, it'll be, become a structural, a load-bearing masonry wall, it'll be probably, you know, grouted solid, maybe filled with sand, you know, there's ways to mitigate the sound.
Yeah, well, especially if it's a classroom.
The structure's usually separate, it just depends how we do it. There's also, you know, there's certainly, we talked about machine rooms with the gentleman from Anderson, but there's also machineless, roomless options, I'm not sure if he can provide that, but there are other options where, that we can look at, so.
I suppose it's a good question or thought. Will, will these operable elevators, when will they be used?
Probably primarily during passing periods, I would assume.
And will they be used only by students that need to use it?
Only people that, absolutely, the only ones that would need it. Somebody's on crutches, wheelchairs, somebody sprains their ankle, but they would have to get approval of the nurse's office to be able to use it.
Right, there's different ways to do that.
No, it would not be used by anybody that's lazy, doesn't want to walk upstairs, no, that would never happen.
Okay, all right. And you can control access, there's many ways to do it.
Right.
You can have key access, you can have card access, you can have, it's just a matter of how you set it up, so. They're pretty sophisticated these days, so.
It could be a playground.
Right, if you're not careful.
You know, so there's all different ways to handle it.
This is also a benefit to the overall accessibility of the building, on the third floor, we have washrooms that are six inches above the normal floor level, those would be left as they are, because it's really impossible to reestablish a reasonable or an ADA compliance slope, but because the elevator will be in place, a student would be able to just go one floor down, and then they'll, a person in a wheelchair would be able to by themselves get into the washroom.
Right, and timing of that's much quicker than waiting for a chairlift to come up the stairs.
Yeah, it's like eight minutes.
You can probably also at that point, remove, remove the chairlift out of the stair, which would increase traffic flow in the stairwell as well, and also future maintenance, so. All right, so the next item I have on my list, we talked about playground replacement of Hollywood, brought with, you know, the biggest current issues there are accessibility, age-appropriate structures, playground safety that have been brought up to us by administration. We talked about, or there was some discussion about a formation of a district-wide playground review committee. I brought, I brought Andy with me from Hitchcock, just to show some of the qualifications, some of the things that we've done in terms of playgrounds, and some of the things they've done, because we would propose bringing him on as our expert in this field, so.
Appreciate everyone's time, I'll try to keep this brief, because I know we're getting fairly late into the evening, but, yeah, my name's Andy Howard with Hitchcock Design Group, I am a landscape architect, kind of a play expert with our firm specializing in recreation education projects, and we've worked with Leggett Architects on several projects. Just wanted to go over briefly some of our experience and qualifications with you in the next couple of slides, and then we'll just open it up for questions. So the first slide, obviously, is the existing playground. As Paul had mentioned, there's a lot of accessibility and other things that we need to deal with as far as safety servicing, how you access the playground, the play equipment itself needs to meet ASTM, CPSC guidelines, which is the American Society of Testing Materials, Consumer Product Safety Commission has, as many of you probably are aware, safety guidelines. We're going to look at all of those as we evaluate, but the goal here is to try to form a committee that will look at a holistic approach to hopefully all four of your sites in order to look at the playgrounds and what condition they're in, and to make some recommendations on maybe moving forward, and this committee is a key component to that, that hopefully will consist of the school district, obviously the board, and a lot of liaisons, potentially principals, maybe some key teacher liaisons as well, but again, trying to formulate that committee is obviously up to this group and how to move forward. Just showing a couple of examples, the school district 59, which is in Arlington Heights, we'd worked with Leggett on, as you can see, there's a variety of materials that are available for play servicing, it's either wood fiber or wood chips is kind of the term, I guess, but it is a actual specification for impact attenuation is one, a little bit more economical, the other one is poured-in-place, rubberized surfacing, rubber tiles, there's also loose rubber mulch material, very versed in all the different materials, we'll look at those as we move forward as far as different options. The main thing to look at, though, is how the space is constructed, providing accessibility. I also just wanted to dispel the myth of that, that most of the time when we think about ADA accessibility, we think about physical, but the statistics are that really it's only a very low percent, you know, like 1 or 2% is in regard to someone in a wheelchair or someone that's has some physical constraints or challenges, I guess, in order to overcome. The reality is that with the rise in autism and ADD and ADHD, that we have a lot of other spectrums in order to look into as we're designing these playgrounds, providing protected spaces for those who may need some acclimation into more physical activity, that those who are more maybe physically dominant, come in and hit the playground and they're sliding and doing other things, we want to make sure that we're looking at a holistic approach in the design of this. Changes in elevation is key, when we look at a playground, making sure that we utilize the change in elevation. One of the biggest mistakes, in my opinion, and I think in our firm's opinion, is that we just keep everything flat, is there ways that we can elevate the kids up, use grade changes, use the natural topography if there is any at the sites in order to really create some different rooms within the spaces. Natural materials and how do we break into these different outdoor rooms is very key as well, and again, another example of utilizing some standard post and deck play equipment with some more nature-themed opportunities to get to those different locations. Wanted to show this slide just as play in general, play on a playground needs to extend beyond the envelope of the play equipment and our design philosophy, how do we look at that edge, whether it's a plastic timber border, which is existing in a lot of the playgrounds that you have, versus a concrete border or breaking that up with boulders or other type of natural materials. There's a lot of learning that can occur and play opportunities within the different materials that are the play container as well. This happens to be at the school district as well, on music, art, layering, you can see the note in the lower center portion of how do we treat the pavement, there's opportunities for learning and cues that we can explore as we look into design options. Play equipment as well, this is Franzen Elementary School, we have kind of the human chess opportunity on the lower right. Again, I want to preface that these are not examples of what we're proposing for your schools, obviously, this is just about experience and some examples of what we've done at other schools. The climbing play structure, some of the trends that have been in Germany for quite a while are starting to really take hold in the United States, which is the net climbers. We need to talk about capacity, when you have a lot of children in a very tight space, maybe the post and deck system of the traditional play equipment may not be as appropriate, how do we look at net climbers and other type of equipment that may have a higher capacity of users for the kids when you are unleashing, you know, several, I guess, high quantity, high new number of kids within the playground at one time. Just the master planning process, I know, you know, this is a big site, it's Quest Academy up in Palatine, and not everyone has the amount of space to have large soccer fields and sports complexes and things like that, but just wanted to show you a little bit of the graphics that would be part of the process of communicating the design. A couple of the spaces, again, entryways, if there's opportunities for grade change, how do we create maybe some areas for gathering, for stages, amphitheaters, ways that the teachers can really use the space in order to get the kids outside and learn outdoors as well as indoors. Couple of opportunities, play equipment has a lot of different choices, the one on the right is actually a traditional slide with GFRC, which is a glass fiber reinforced concrete shell around it that looks like a log, obviously there's some costs associated with more of the nature and theming, but might be appropriate for, you know, particular schools, and that's, those are things we can discuss throughout the process. Some of the interpretation on the port and place rubber surfacing on the left side, you can do natural shapes like leaf patterns or ways to lead kids from one area to another, and so the play surfacing becomes another component that gets kids to move, the whole idea of movement, getting their heart rates up, getting a physical activity on the playground. Again, a couple other slides, obviously the grade chains on that one on the upper left is probably not going to be occurring in any of the facilities here, but this is up in Waukegan where we do have 15-foot of grade chains near some bur oak, so there can be some larger spaces, some smaller spaces, it could be geared more towards the early childhood education component, so there is two to five, actually, there's a, like a zero to 23 months level, a two to five and five to 12. So looking at those age-appropriate groups is going to be important, especially for the early childhood facility and one of your school facilities. Just other ones, play equipment, we're very versed on all the different manufacturers and type of equipment that's out there, we're not recommending, you know, we look at all of them, we don't play, we're not impartial to one versus the other, we want to do what's going to fit best for that site, best for the school, and with the committee's input, of course. So we would be the liaison, and the professional would come in and provide different options, and really hone in on what that facility is going to look like and what the committee decides on as far as the plate components, what's beyond that, we're going to look at the trees and shade, all these other things are just as important. Couple of projects we've worked on from experience, we've done 40, 50 parks within Chicago Park District within the city, just as many in the suburbs, Mount Greenwood's on the left, Morton Arboretum Children's Garden, I had the pleasure of working on for about a year and a half to two years, if anyone's been there, the bankman slides are showing ways that you can use a traditional flip slide from a Game Time manufacturer, integrate it into a slope. Obviously, that's a higher end from a cost standpoint, but there, you could take traditional play equipment and look in different ways of using it within the playground, and we can explore those. Another one is early child facility on the lower right with Allstate Campus in Northbrook.
Questions for our playground expert?
Seems like there are a lot of options, I mean, it seemed very exciting, actually, to consider all the options that we have available for the different ages and different, different schools and different abilities, so it seemed like there are a lot of things to consider, so are you thinking about maybe talking about this in detail at the next committee of the whole meeting, and then come up with a committee?
Yes.
And sort of.
And I think the Hollywood people have been working on this for quite a while, so we want you to meet with people that have already been discussing this for a couple of years, and then I think we have to expand it to the rest of the district before, you know, we go next step, right?
Well, thank you for your time today. David, you.
I'd like to make one, one comment about the playground budget, $150,000 is probably not going to cut it, just to, just to surprise you of that, that was kind of a, I'd say that's a lower cost estimate, considering that the, the reality is that the current, what do you call it, the surface, the chip is not compliant.
You're talking about Hollywood now only?
Yeah.
Okay, just Hollywood, all right.
Hollywood is going to have to be a total replacement of everything you're looking at.
Right.
And that's probably a light number.
No question.
Again, I think it depends also what the findings of the committee are too, I think we need to look at that, probably premature.
At this point, you haven't met with the Hollywood group?
Absolutely not, no, this is just, this is a.
Right, but I think on October 6th, we would be asking the board for that green light to proceed to meet with a Hollywood committee. If the board has reservations, then we need to get that out in the open, if we want to go ahead, then, again, February bid openings, we get early in the cycle of the summer.
We've still got some time, but we, they need to get their, they need to build up and going.
Are we focusing, I'm sorry to interrupt, are we focusing on Hollywood because the preschool is there?
Yeah, and right now, the current playground is not accessible to any of the kids that are under five, and we have early childhood there.
Is that the only one that's inaccessible?
Uh, no, I don't think that's the case, no.
I don't think, I think all of them are.
From an ADA standpoint, correct, but from an accessibility, there's different levels of accessibility, if you're talking about age-appropriate for the kids that are using it, then that probably is probably what more we're talking about at Hollywood.
Right.
Is the committee, a lot of the PTA, or, I mean, the committee's been assembled and they've been talking about it?
They've been discussing it, from my understanding, a couple of years, is that right?
I actually wasn't on the committee, Sue Gersh, who was my co-president last year, was, there was the principal, the early, one of the early learners teachers, and I think our gym teacher was also on the committee, and there might have been a couple of others, so they had started pursuing it, initially this was something we thought the PTA was one to pay for. And so we started getting into, you know, actually the first times, however long ago it was, 10 to 12 years ago, when that particular playground was put in, the PTA did pay for that. So that is why, that's why we initially started looking at it, when we started getting into other discussions such as ADA compliance and what would need to happen, we were like, maybe it's going to take us 20 years to work that kind of dough, so it was something that I think then conversation turned.
Maybe then what we could do is we start out by reaching out, as you suggested, to the Hollywood group, they've already thought about this, and then get representatives from all the other schools, and maybe form a district-wide group that we can sort of look in detail in conjunction with the architects, and figure out what, you know, what the options are, make some recommendations based on that.
I would, I would just ask, the $150,000, David, that's plugged in there, would that be enough for one playground at, say, Hollywood School? I'm being a little cost pessimistic, I think $60,000 to $70,000 just for the equipment, and then we've got a lot of money necessary for site preparation, and then depending upon what the committee lands on in terms of materials that go underneath all the play surface, what is the size of the play surface that they end up, you know, anticipating or designing, and the, the lack of an early childhood area at all at Hollywood means that we're probably looking at taking over more space than is currently occupied for the playground.
Which may have stormwater implications that we have to incorporate.
I think it's fair to say at this point, the cost range is a little bit uncertain, it's going to depend on what we want to do and so forth, so.
Ballpark, it would be closer to.
I think we want to wait and meet with.
Yeah, we really need to know what we're looking at, what size we're talking about, materials, it'd be a little premature, I think, so we know exactly what we're dealing with.
I just have, my reservation is I think that we should wait to spend money like this until we complete our total facilities review, and looking at our strategic plan for the district, because I am concerned that what happens if we move the early childhood program to Ames, and then we're going to have to fix that playground, I just, you know, about that amount of money to do something like that piecemeal?
I think this needs to be integrated and thought through, and as be part of our strategic planning process, I totally agree with that, but I think having a committee to sort of look, start looking at the big picture without committing, you know, any definite, committing to any definite plan, I think probably is a fairly good thing to start with, you know, getting a committee together and start thinking about this, and have that. getting a committee together and start thinking about this, and have that be a topic of the facilities focus group as well.
Right, or if we're going to look at one facility, I think we should look at them all, for the same concerns.
Well, that's why we talked about a district-wide committee, to join the Hollywood people to look at the bigger picture.
I can guarantee you, every other school will say...
This, right, they all need that.
I've been to all of them, and they all, I think, have the same problems, safety concerns.
You know, the district-wide, you know, people thinking about it, getting more people thinking about this will come up with better plans, I think.
So long-term, will the early learners stay at Hollywood, is that like a pretty sure bet?
That's hard, that should come out of your strategic planning, I can't really answer that, you know, and right now, they found themselves a home, but I can't tell you if that's going to be here in 10 years from now.
I believe Hollywood House is not part of our school district.
No, that's true.
So their continuation at that site is not a decision this school district would make.
Don't even have control of, totally.
Right. Which makes this more of a concern.
What did you say, Hollywood House is not part of our school district?
The land is on, the land for the playground is on the Hollywood House land, so we don't own that land.
What, I guess our playground is on their land, is that what you're saying?
I believe so, isn't it?
And the proposed playground will also be on their land, but they've been very happy and willing to work with us on that.
It's a community resource.
And the district pays the liability, pays the insurance on it, but it does sit on their property.
You have a similar situation at Blythe, where it's in the Park District, right?
Right.
I would just like to hear from our early childhood education coordinator about the compliance or lack of compliance that we have with that playground at Hollywood, and if it is something that deserves a higher priority to be addressed.
I'm sure the committee has also compiled a lot of that.
Excuse me?
I'm looking at Kristin Dido to see, the committee, I'm assuming, has probably already compiled a lot of that information.
I'm sure they have, I haven't actually, I wasn't on that part last year, but I do understand that none of the existing playground is safe or appropriate for that to use, so they actually don't have anything.
Why don't we let the committee look into that question, which is an important question, and also the, and work with the architects and come back with something, and also be the focus group, so.
Yeah, sounds good.
So thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think you heard the consensus on the elevator to move forward, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
And then, I'm just looking at the priorities 2016 projects, no Blythe Park roof this
year, is that what I heard?
I'm going to defer to 17.
Possibly, they're looking at it, but they think they're...
It's on there twice, I notice it's listed twice on the...
Well, we actually talked about, sorry if I interject, we talked about, we're going to go out again probably in the next couple of weeks and do an assessment on it, and then make a recommendation as to whether or not it could be pulled off the list officially.
Okay.
But our initial thoughts are that we could probably defer.
I don't think Blythe is listed twice.
Blythe Park roof?
No, on this, the first.
This is the very first agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was referring to...
It was on Ellen.
Alright, so moving on, see, thank you, the next item is old business, we have district goals, we've talked about these in July, we added a few items in July, we talked, it was on the agenda in August, at this point, we are...
I think it was presented to staff on the institute day, correct?
Yes, right, that's right.
So the staff has had a chance to respond to it, it's, at this point, it would be appropriate for you to adopt these goals, our next action would be, and it's, we were already involved in doing it, is creating action plans with measurable objectives, specifically for the instructional program and student success, and so that's our next step, and you're going to get that on your COW meeting for education, Sherry, I think, has already seen a draft of it, and that'll come in October.
So...
I have one quick question, is this appropriate, so these six goals, like, say, website revision, accessibility of school buildings, when we're doing strategic planning, is this, are these things that we should not be focusing on because they're already part of our goals of the year?
These are your, if you're adopting them, they're your annual goals.
So if we're going to come out with two priorities in facilities, say, is accessibility, should it be one of them, or is it already a goal, you know, I just don't want to do this, or just repeat the same thing, like, accessibility in our long-range shirt is accessibility, you know?
Well, your strategic planning is going to be a five-year plan.
Right.
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 Right now, what we've got, and you added that accessibility, let's take that for example, the board added that, and that's why you heard from these architects today, that they need a green light to move on this, so.
No, I agree on it, I'm just...
That's why all our energies are moving towards that.
Yeah, no, I'm just for clarification for my own purposes and facilitating a group, is that, is that, would though, would one of those, would, say I'm in the facilities facilitator, would accessibility, would we say, we already have that goal, so let's focus on two other goals?
My interpretation of the accessibility goal that's listed here is that we're not, we're not going to solve every accessibility problem in the district.
We're just taking one step, alright?
Okay, no, I'm just trying to clarify for my own...
So I would think that would be appropriate, I think, to have that.
So in the strategic planning, Lynda, we could, we could raise the level of that accessibility, we could say, we want...
Central next.
We want central, or we want two or three entrances at each school, as opposed to just meeting the minimum requirement.
I guess the way I'm looking at it is that we've said accessibility is a goal, and then there's objectives under those goals, and the first objective is...
Minimal accessibility with an elevator in Hauser, right now, that's your miserable...
Right, those are goals and objectives in act and plan, but the high level is accessibility, and then there are going to be specific projects that we're going to do, and again, you and I've had kind of this same conversation that Lynda's bringing up, anyway, you're going to provide objectives and measurable outcomes and, on the two instructional, but anything you can do to flush out the others would be helpful as well.
Oh, absolutely, you're going to see an update on the website in October, where we are in terms of redesigning the website, and of course, the superintendent's search and the strategic planning, you don't need any more feedback on, you're deep in it, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see it in one place, on one document.
No problem.
Is there a motion to adopt the specified goals as stated below, including superintendent's search, comprehensive strategic plan, instructional program, student success, website revision, and accessibility of school buildings?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Can you call the whole, please?
Rich Regan?
Aye.
Lynda Murphy?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Sherry Kleiber?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
And Jeff Miller?
Aye.
And the motion is passed.
Okay, the next item is public comment, we opened the meeting to public comment at the end of the meeting as well as the beginning, is there any public comment?
Just amazement that we're almost done.
Seeing that there is no public comment, the next meeting dates are October 6th, it's a committee of the whole meeting at 7:00 PM here in the Learning Resource Center of Hauser, there is a special meeting on October 6th at 9:00 PM here as well, there is a regular business meeting on October 20th at 6:30 here in Hauser, there is a committee of the whole meeting on November 4th at 7:00 PM here at Hauser, and there is a regular business meeting on November 17th at 6:30.
And the only thing that's not mentioned, because the board members will all be involved, is the 15th and 16th of October, I guess we should add those as special workshops for the board, because those focus meetings, you'll be all attending, so they are, in a sense, board meetings, or board workshops.
What times are those?
Pardon me?
Times?
Six to nine, what was it?
Oh, 6:30 to 9:30.
Was it 6:30, yes?
6:30 to 9:30, three hours, Thursday and Friday, the board chose not to go on Saturday and preferred two night evenings, so, that's the plan.
I have one quick question, can we clarify, when we go into closed session at the beginning of the meeting, do we have a time limit of when?
My understanding, we were going to give ourselves an hour, and I think there was some misunderstanding that you normally would only use a half hour?
I think in past practice, just for temporarily, that's what we were doing, so I just want to make sure we have it clarified so that...
Yeah, and I apologize if that was, we inconvenienced anybody tonight, because I was expecting, we actually finished earlier than I expected, because we had to redo the contract.
I think we need to make sure we have a time, so that if somebody wants public comment, they know to be here.
Yeah, we had that, the public portion of the meeting should start at 7:30, like it always has.
7:30, okay.
That's the way it always is.
Oh, that's what I thought, right.
You know, and if we finish early, then we go to the...
So you're saying that we should not put 6:30 on the agenda, we should put 7:30 because the first hour is closed session, is that the idea?
Or just make it more detailed, so that...
Well, you have to put it detailed so the public knows at 6:30.
So that Kristin's not here at 6:30.
Right, right.
I messed it up two months ago, but we've been kind of off.
If you finish early, you go to the washroom and you do other things for 15 minutes, it's not fair to the public to start the public portion early.
Just want to make sure that we're starting...
Not to start it early, but to not start it at a consistent time.
What do we want to, do we want to sort of make it 7:30 then, as we'll start on 7:30 for the regular business meeting?
Actually, my hope would be, is that we could...
Start at seven?
Start at seven, in other words, we could keep closed session to half hour, and maybe even have no closed session would be my dream come true for all of you, you know, to avoid closed session.
We'll try to shoot for 7:00.
I know, but can you, I guess here's my question, isn't the whole, when you set your schedule, meetings at the beginning of the year, isn't the idea to kind of follow it and to be consistent?
Correct.
So, I mean, you can start your meeting at 6:30 with a quorum, and if you, you know, you don't have anything to do, you don't meet, but you still don't start other portions of it, you know?
Other portions, and I think 7 o'clock is more reasonable than the 7:30, assuming that, you know, that you would have, like, tonight, we had a lot of business, but normally, you will not have that much business in that session.
Again, just, I'm going on history here, not my particular preference, I think the district has always started its meetings at 7:30, we started a year ago to do the, when we kind of got rid, we, we're having the policy committee meeting prior to that, then we got rid of that and we said, let's do closed session, and part of the reason we picked the time we pick is because some of the board members work, and I don't, so it's easy for me.
Did you start closed session at 7 or 6:30?
We started it at 6:30, that only started a year ago, and we eliminated the policy committee meeting prior, and I guess that's the, and I'm going to ask the people who do work, can they make it at 7, is that true of the question?
Is 6:30 too early for those people that have to come in from the city, and, Rich and Rachel?
I like 6:30.
So 6:30, well, 6:30 closed session, 7 o'clock, we'll start the business meeting.
Fine, and we don't forget, we have staff here, we have parents, and they would like to get home to their families, too.
Absolutely.
And does that mean we change the schedule then, in the, well, no, we still have 6:30?
No, we still have the 6:30 starting time, so really, we're not changing.
I think we just need to publicize on the agenda, 6:30 closed, 7:30.
Public session starts at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, that way, if somebody wants to make a comment, they need to...
Will we be able to go into a second closed session?
Yes, absolutely.
If needed.
If we need it.
Randy, good question, I always put that on the agenda, if needed, and like I did tonight, we don't need it, by the way.
You'll continue to put that...
I always do, for every single meeting, nobody can leave here until you sign the budget.
In four places.
And, so don't adjourn the meeting, Mr. President.
Well, no, I will adjourn the meeting so everyone can leave, but I want everyone to stay.